Good morning. We'd like to welcome each of you to our Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. Those in our audience, thank you for being here. And those who are viewing us by way of television, we appreciate your interest in county government. I'd like to call our March the 12th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And before we have our roll call, could I have a motion to excuse Mrs. Ward?
So move it.
She is traveling today and should be back in the country tonight. So let's vote on that. All in favor?
If you raise your hand and say you're being called, she is excused.
And now let's have our roll call. We shall now have our invocation and pledge. Let's stand, please. Let's pray. Father, we thank you this morning for your many blessings upon us. We thank you once again for the opportunity of assembling together. We thank you for life and for the many blessings that you bestow upon us each and every day. We pray now, Father, that you might bless us as we go through this agenda today. Help us to do those things that are pleasing in your sight and make those decisions that are best for those that we represent. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion that we approve the agenda?
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, we have one public hearing this morning, our 2009 Community Development Block Grant. And Mr. Rose is going to present that to us.
Morning, Mr. Garris, members of the board. Public hearing this morning is to receive comments as we're closing out our 2009 Community Development Block Grant or CDBG project with the state. And you are probably familiar with some of these projects that we've been working on over the past three years. We are now in a three-year cycle of receiving monies. We still have to apply, but basically on a three-year cycle for receiving these funds from the state that are passed down from the federal government. Typically, we get $400,000 in. About 40,000 of that is included for administrative cost. The remainder goes into rehabilitation of substandard housing for low-income people. And you can see on this map, pretty much shows you the nine homes that have been completed or rehabilitated around the county, stretching from the very northern part on down. Some are in town, some are out in the rural portions. And a lot of these homes are, again, maybe the FHA-style homes that are about 40 years old now, have some different types of conditions. It might be a roof, it might be a number of issues, may need some handicap facilities in the homes to help some of these households function better in the current surroundings. This is just one example, and you can see some of the issues with this particular home along the roof line and just some issues, windows and other things that are not in good shape. This is kind of the after effect after we go in with a contractor's assistance to do some work. Just on the exterior, you see gutters, new roof. And inside, pretty much ripped out this kitchen and started anew as far as cabinets and also the flooring. And the bathrooms are one that we actually spend a lot of work and time on. A lot of these homes have issues with wood rot. And a lot of them, you can see the grab handle here on the side of the wall. Very important for elderly folks is they're trying to stay self-sufficient in their surroundings. And again, grab bars in the shower. You can see newly painted, newly carpeted type home here. So again, we're now closing this out for this three-year cycle. We'll be notified hopefully within the next few months about the 2012 cycle, that again will be three years running. And we'll probably be looking not only at rehabilitation for those funds, but actually get into some replacement housing. And we'll be back with public hearings as we get closer to that, let you know what type of activities are intended based on our clients. So today, after the public hearing, Mr. Garris, we'd like for you to authorize staff to submit all closeout documents for this grant and authorize the chairman to sign all the documents to close out the grant. With that, we'd like to open the public hearing.
Very good. I declare the public hearing open. There's no one that has signed up to speak on this matter, but if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this particular matter, you certainly may do so. Okay? I see no one, so I declare the...
Yes, yes.
Well, not on this matter.
He wants to speak on something else.
In the public...
Okay, fine. So I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Will be authorized chairman to sign.
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
James, you know, over the years, we've been talking about that country mark on Highway 11, the Pugmoor Road. I thought it was nothing there to help those particular people. Has that been dropped off the radar? Are we still looking at that pertaining to sewage and so forth to upgrade these homes?
Mr. James, you might recall, I think we've had no less than three applications go in to assist with either running sewer or doing a concentrated needs-type rehabilitation on homes on that particular road segment. For whatever reason, the funding just hasn't been available. There are a few households in that area that have higher incomes that might preclude them from being included. What we have done is be able to go in and actually pick out the worst of the worst on that road and help with rehabilitation of the homes. We actually have a replacement home up there, too, that we've done.
That you... In other words, the big thing was the sewage along in that. Of course, Country Mark has got that sewage.
Right.
Had it, got it in the beginning, but we haven't been able to get the rest of them on to it.
We have not been able to receive funding for that, and we have tried at least twice on the sewer by itself.
Is there any way that we could work through Mideast pertaining to this particular area, James?
We can talk Mideast about that.
Let's do that. Okay. That's all, Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. We now have, will have our public addresses to the board. Is there anyone who would like to address us on any issue? You may come forward. You have three minutes. Please give your name and your address.
Morning. My name's Mike Leach. I live at 103 Briarwood Drive, and I also serve as a president of the old West Holhaven Homeowners Association. Reason I'm here today is I believe the assessments in Pitt County have been stated in the median to the commissioners about 6%. Our 58 people in an older neighborhood, homes are in the, from the 70s and 80s, most of the residents are in their 70s and 80s, experienced an increase of 12.2%, which is a $1 million increase over and above, or during times when we would have expected a decrease. The reason for that is there were five sales in the last four years in this older neighborhood. Four of the sales were at values over the appraised values. That amounted to about a 17.1% increase over the appraised values. There's reasons for all of those overappraisals or overvaluations. I don't have the time within three minutes to go through them, but I do have the facts. The commissioners have been provided copies of a worksheet in your mail that I dropped off on Saturday detailing the addresses. Basically, it's a privilege to address an audience that understands the nuances of the taxation process, because I'm trying to train or educate 58 people in my neighborhood, and only half of them understand tax valuations versus tax rates and how things are going to play out in the July tax bills. We're all City of Greenville residents, which means we get the double whammy of Pitt County taxes and city taxes. And if valuations go up, and you'll be talking later on this morning about tax rate possible increases, it's a triple whammy for those people. Basically, I think Scott Elliott and his staff are great. This is not a criticism. I think they've been faked down a position by the valuation. I do not wear a watch, but during these times of the most severe recession in our life, I believe my three minutes is up, and I believe the tax valuation should have decreased for this 58-home community. And it's sort of unfair to ask all 58 residents, especially when many of them don't understand, to formal file, file formal notices to contest the rate increase and provide appraisals that, in my opinion, they can't afford to spend $300, $400 for appraisals. Be glad to turn around and discuss this in detail with anybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. I believe you have written a letter to our manager with this information on it, and he will investigate and get back with you. I would also like to add that anyone who has a question about their evaluation and would like to challenge it, we do have a separate board, the Board of Adjustments, that is established just for that. And you can appear before that board and present your case and see what action they would take. Okay? Thank you very much. We shall now go to our items for report, and our manager is going to give his report.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman. Just to clarify and to follow from Mr. Leach and for the public to know, there are three steps of appeal. And the first step is to call in an appeal to the Tax Department directly for revaluation, 2012 revaluation. The second step of appeal would be to appeal it to the Pitt County Board of E&amp;R Equalization and Review. The third step of appeal would then be to the North Carolina Department of Revenue. And that's kind of the appeal process as it is. Under my manager's report, you'll see...
May I ask you a question? In other words, we don't have a say-so to county commissioners? I don't have a say-so in this?
That is correct. You have appointed the Pitt County Board of Equalization and Review. Your statutory, your say is through that appointed board, through those individuals you've appointed to sit as... Now, the Board of Commissioners, you could opt to, if you had decided prior to sit as a Board of E&amp;R, you can do that, but you delegated that responsibility to the appointed board.
But how about if a taxpayer say, "I want to appeal before the Board of Commissioners"? Do they have that right?
Well, just like Mr. Leach did here this morning, he can come at public expression. Or if you, as a commissioner, want to introduce an item on the agenda, you could do that. But I'd recommend that you, first and foremost, have them go through the formal appeal process that's recognized by statute.
Oh, yes. Well, I know that, but as a wise resort, I would think they would come before us if they desire. Okay, I have no more questions.
Items on the manager's report, next meeting dates, you've got March 26, 6:00 p.m. will be your regular meeting, and then April 2 at 9:00 a.m. Remind you of Item B, but the legislative breakfast coming up on March 30 at 8:00 a.m. Item C, that's entitled "Pitt County Public Health," is actually an application on behalf of Pitt County Government for the Community Benefits Grants Program through the Viden Medical Center Foundation. And this will be to try to seek funding to develop a crosswalk across County Home Road as well as the trail system within the district park, be to the farmer's market, just a village a yesteryear, as well as hopefully for the use of the Wintergreen Elementary School as well as the community garden. There's a number of uses in there. We're trying to tie all of these together. County Home Road is kind of the division between the district park on one side, on the east side, and then on the west side, you've got the district park, animal shelter, the school. So the goal is to try to get funding from the foundation to assist with that project. Item D, the Pitt County Planning Department is going to be applying for funds through the Hospital Foundation as well, and this will be to assist with individuals with the homeless population. I believe that's another $5,000 application as well. Item E, in your weekly info packet that is sent out, since you had a memo forwarded from Brian Evans regarding voluntary agricultural districts. And as I had showed in the packet, Pitt County is, in the packet, we said one of 88 counties in North Carolina that currently do not have these districts. I believe it's more like, it's one of 85. It's a little smaller number, 83. But majority of all counties do have voluntary agricultural districts. The Pitt County Soil and Water Board is recommending to move forward with investigating the possibility of implementing the VADs or voluntary agricultural districts in Pitt County. They would like to enlist the assistance of a consultant to help with this. There are outside monies to pay for this. It's about $2,500. In the end, it would come back before you as the elected board, Pitt County Board of Commissioners, to decide whether you want to implement this project or not. So right now, I'm just announcing it. There is a workshop that they're wanting to announce and to plan for later this month, which you would be invited to attend.
The Farm Bureau, North Carolina Farm Bureau, they pushing this very strongly because of many of the counties in North Carolina have become industrial. And there is, like in the, say, Greenwood, it spans, there'll be no farms. They're trying to give them, I think, tax breaks as far as this land. If they let it stay in the farming, then maybe the tax rate will not be, or might not have to pay city taxes or county taxes as far as that go, if it could be used in that respect. I don't know, but like Meckenburg, all your larger counties, industrial counties, they have that now. And it's a good thing, I think, to investigate as time goes on. Of course, when we're going to need it, most of us are going to be gone, but I think we need to look to the future.
There would not be any additional tax breaks. Basically, this would kind of work in conjunction with the county's present use program through the Tax Department. If you, you'd have to be present use qualified in order to be a VAD, voluntary agricultural district. And part of the intent of the program is to kind of put on notice an area that it's an agricultural area, whether it's, you know, crops, chickens, hogs, wherever it may be. So as the county continues to grow and as we have encroaching urbanization out into the rural areas, people will not be surprised that they're building a house in an agricultural area that may have noise or smell or so forth. So the idea is to designate these areas to get more public notice as to what the agricultural operation is in the area.
But they found if you don't give them some incentive to hold this land, they're going to develop all of it. And I don't blame them. I think most people would do that. So you got to give them some incentive that they will hold to it and use it for that particular purpose. I mean, I think, but I don't know. But I know they're giving some types. I think that's where your consultants would come in, be, become involved in that.
So if the consensus of the board will move forward with this, the workshop will be planned coming up. And again, a proposed ordinance would come back to you, and you'd have the choice at that point in time as to whether you would like to implement this or not. It'll be ultimately up to the Board of Commissioners. But again, the far majority of counties in North Carolina have this in place, and staff is recommending for it to be considered.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. Want to follow up regarding the current year budget reductions. It appeared before the board, probably a good month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, stating that we needed to cut about $2.3 million out of the current year's budget as we were looking at projecting the use of fund balance for June 30 at year-end of this current fiscal year. And if we didn't do something to manage the expenditures of dollars that, in effect, the budget would begin to manage us, and we'd be spending fund balance down like we have done in the past. I'm happy to announce that it's been a tough process working with everybody. Not that the process has been tough, but it's tough to cut mid-year to find $2.3 million. But we have identified the $2.3 million. We have executed the budget amendments. We'd like to report that the Pitt County school system by statute had the opportunity to appear before you before those cuts were made in the course of a public meeting to explain the impact of those cuts. I've talked to Dr. Emery, and she has written me and notified me that they looked at this, their finance committee met on it. They're opting right now, I mean, from her correspondence, not to come before you, that yes, they will take the cut, they will manage it. They're doing reversions as well within the school system with county dollars. So at this point in time, we have met that benchmark and do not anticipate, hopefully, we will not have any use of fund balance, expenditure of fund balance for meeting June 30. But again, it's a moving target. We might be $100,000 to the plus or good, but we're nowhere near where we were when we came before you about two months ago. So it's a good news report, in essence.
Yeah. Mr. James, how do we stand on the ABC board pertaining to their sending funds and so forth? I think it's, I would, I'd like to know, pertaining to happening to this situation.
First quarter, second quarter. As you're aware, first quarter, they met the $275,000 distribution. Second quarter, they again met the $275,000 distribution. We'll be waiting for third quarter, which will actually be the end of this month, and we'll meet with them probably mid to late March to discuss that third quarter distribution. So right now, we are...
On schedule.
On schedule.
Good deal. Okay.
Item G, the Chicago Sewer Project. Just wanted to make you aware that that project is moving forward very nicely. The project is out to bid right now, and that the actual proposals or bids are due on April 3. And the actual construction is scheduled for this spring with hopefully a closeout fall or late fall. But we do, we are continuing to move forward on that. And one other item, just wanted to bring to your attention. Last meeting, you dealt with the issue of the no-wake zone at Sane Beach, and probably read the paper that the signs and buoys had been, had been removed, taken down. We have located buoys, and we have manufactured new signs, and those will be going back up this week. And we're working with the Water Wildlife Resources Commission to help us put those signs in and hopefully put them in on a more permanent basis so they can't be removed unless we, as the county, decide to remove them.
I read that, and I was very much concerned. Who removed those signs?
Could not identify. Some neighbors, I think as reported in the newspaper, maybe said some young men were seen out there in a boat, taking them down. But that's all we know.
Well, is it against the law to remove them such as that?
I would imagine so. I turned to the attorney on that, but I would say yes.
Somebody needs to get on the ball, then. Just tell them, let them know, we mean business.
That's all I got to say. But I think it's a safety issue. That's the reason that I said, what I said when we had the meeting. And we did this, what, 10, 15 years ago? When there was a great concern pertaining to that. Don't mess with them.
One last item. You do have a letter from Nancy Colville before you. Just bring that to your attention. She asked that to be, to be provided for you, as she could not make the meeting this morning, about some data that she was requesting from the Tax Department, which she received on Friday.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We have one other item for report, and that is our tax collections report, and Ms. Booker will present that.
Good morning. You have your collection report in front of you. The February 2012 combined collection rate of 94.55 is slightly ahead of the 2011 collection rate of 93.64, and it is also ahead of the February 2010 collection rate of 93.67. Any questions?
Any questions?
It's just an illustration, Mr. Chairman, that things appear to be getting better.
Good. Thank you. Well, it's a pleasure. We need to approve this. Do you have a motion?
So move it.
Second. Okay, let's vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Let's vote on that. Let me also say about our consent agenda, it was pointed out last Thursday at our agenda review that we need to continually remind the public that these items on the consent agenda are items that really don't require a whole lot of discussion on our part. We've read over these specific items and know what they are, so we just go on and approve them. But if you have any question about any item on the consent agenda, you can call our county office, or you can call one of your board members, and we'll be happy to explain or discuss those with you. The, we do have one item for discussion on our agenda this morning, and that is a subject that we talked about during our budget workshop, and we're looking at all aspects as to how we can improve the efficiency of county government and make sure that we have a good conservative budget next year. And one of those things that we talked about was initiating a voluntary early retirement incentive program, and Scott is going to share his thoughts with us on that. And what I'd like to ask you to do is let Scott go through this presentation, and then at the end, we will have whatever questions you might have to address him.
Before you, you have a copy of, we've got three handouts, and this is the first one to go over. And this is looking at the positive and negative considerations of an ERIP, which is in...
You got another one, Scott?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
ERIP stands for Early Retirement Incentive Plan. And right now, when we met back on January the 26th in the workshop on the State of the County Report, an ERIP was listed as a possible item to consider as one alternative or one solution to assist in balancing next year's budget. This is not an end-all budget solution by no means. Let me start this presentation off with that. If you decide to implement this, this will be one tool out of the toolbox that would assist in reducing expenditures, but it is not the end-all solution. So I tried to, with staff, we put a lot of time and thought into the program and pulling data together. And let me just say one other point about the whole program as we've identified it. In terms of our knowledge of those who are, who could possibly participate, we only know those who are in the organization who have all their years with Pitt County Government. We don't know somebody that may have been here for 15 years but brought, has 10 years from Guilford County or from Edgcombe County or from the city of Raleigh or so forth. So the data set that we're working with is the knowledge base of our county employees. And we didn't want to send a survey or anything out there and asking employees, you know, questions about service, would you want to participate, because we don't know that you want to go down this road. So this is really the, this starts the conversation off. So on the slide right now, you'll see positive considerations. There are reoccurring savings that could be realized through this program. A, through a reduction in headcount, and B, through lower staffing costs for headcount that would have to be refilled. For everybody that leaves, I mean, it's unrealistic to say that if 10 people walked out the door, that there might not be a need, well, there would be a need to refill a portion of those positions. And I'll go through the assumptions on that in just a moment. The savings can partially assist in balancing the fiscal year 12, 13 budget. Kind of alluded to that just a moment ago. It reduces the extent of a potential reduction in force, a RIF. And as you recall, a year ago, we had brought before you, and you made amendments to the personal ordinance as to how we would implement a RIF within the organization. And actually, I've asked the, asked Florida Hardy to pull together a memo for the board just to remind you what the steps of a RIF would be if, in fact, we have to go down that road as one of those additional tools in the toolbox to help in balancing next year's budget. By implementing an ERIP program, it avoids unemployment costs associated with a RIF. We have unemployment costs that we're still currently paying for mental health employees from a good number, a good while back. This program is voluntary. Nobody's being, nobody's arm is going to be twisted to retire. It is a completely voluntary program. It would allow for the selective replacement of positions. You may have a department head who decides to leave, or you may have a key position within a department that would have to be refilled. Again, I'll get back to some assumptions on that in just a moment. It allows for some restructuring of the organization, as we may shift people around depending upon what positions would be eliminated in terms of eliminate on a permanent basis. And also that right now, there's an unknown number of participants. That's a positive consideration because it could be a lot, it could, or it could not be, depending upon how people view this. On the next page, and if Melanie can flip the slide on, okay, thank you, on negative considerations. The first one I feel is a really big one, because we're going to have what I feel is a loss of institutional knowledge. We're basically providing an incentive or incentives for our long-term employees to retire. And we'll go into the specific data of who and how many and so forth in a moment, another handout. Another negative, obviously, you've got to count your costs. So there's the temporary cost of funding the ERIP incentives. Some of those are one-time costs, and some of those are ongoing costs of the program. Another negative consideration is the short-term costs associated with recruiting and training replacement staffing for those positions that would still need to be backfilled. There's the increased potential for mistakes with staffing transitions as we will... There's the increased potential for mistakes with, with staffing transitions, as we will be down-staffed, we will may, we'd be in the recruiting and the training, training phase. Another consideration is, under current constrained hiring practices, the ERIP will further impact service times and delivery. I don't think we can, think that we're going to convince people to retire early, and that we're, there will not be some impact on, within departments as to the length of time it takes to, you know, process a, a building permit, or do a building inspection, do a food stamp application, whatever it may be, especially as we lose, as we potentially lose long-term employees who have a lot of experience in the organization. Another negative consideration, and this is real on both charts, the last one, the unknown number of participants. We may only have a very small handful that, that take the county up on this offer. Now for some of the details. Have two, come around to you in just a moment, two considerations for you to look at. Wait till it gets to you. Again, this is entitled a voluntary, voluntary early retirement incentive program, and consideration one is what we call Group One, and this consists of employees with 20 to 29 years of service. As identified within the organization, there's 52 eligible participants who could participate. Again, those are the people that we know exactly their years of service, because they're with Pitt County. Again, we don't know that, that employee or employees that have a combination of experience with other jurisdictions, that would be accountable years of service within the North Carolina retirement system. This first consideration is a health insurance promotion, this is what was talked for, alluded to at the January 26th workshop, looking at effective date of September 1, in terms of processing the entire program. The next bullet, the employees' last 10 years of service is being proposed, would have to be with Pitt County, and they must meet the North Carolina Local Government Retirement System Retirement Eligibility Requirements, i.e. 50 plus the, the number of years required. ERIP participants would not be eligible for rehire into a permanent position within the county after they took this option to retire. The savings would equal salaries and benefits, the county would not have to fund if the position is eliminated. New hires and positions that have to be replaced may come in at a lower salary and a lesser benefits package, so even if we do have to backfill some of the positions, we would expect a lower salary. As you recall, you've taken actions in the last couple of years, new hires are not eligible for the longevity, the basically payback to. The DSS factor in this analysis, of the 52 participants, there was a good many of them that were actually DSS employees, and as you recall, the DSS, their salaries, as it affects the general fund, the general fund really only pays about 50% on average of their salary, so we want to make sure that we were backing out the factor of state and federal dollars, and that we were truly giving you a, a true analysis of what we're bringing before you. Another thing is the one-time payout cost of comp time they may have, or personal leave balances. So the assumptions of the program are, one, that 30% of those who are eligible will take the offer, could be 50, it could be 15, but right now, we're making the assumption that 30%. The second assumption is that of the 30% that would elect to take the offer, we're thinking that we'll probably need to backfill half of those positions, to be realistic, in order to, to, to meet the, the needs and demands of the organization. So the calculations in terms of savings, you have 52 eligible participants, and again, that's out of the pool, that's the known pool, could be 100, could really be in the pool, but we won't know that unless you direct us to take the next step, and to reach out to the employee population. So the 52 eligible, 30% would be 15, if we have seven replacements of the 15, you'd have eight positions that would be actual savings under this program. So the way the savings are calculated, eight times 50,000, 50,000 is a average salary and benefits package, and you have to take out the money for the leave payout, have to take out money for insurance, and that comes out into a year-one savings of $267,000. Year-two will be greater savings, because you're not, you're not doing those payouts. Again, eight, eight employees, 50,000 a year, minus the insurance for the 15 employees, so year-two savings is 292,000. If you flip to the next page, the second consideration would be a group of employees that would, who are already retirement eligible, they've got either 30 years in, in with us, or greater. You might have some that only have 28, 29, but between their, their sick leave balances they have, they could technically retire today, if they so chose, and go out the system. They were from 30, I mean, I think it goes up to 37 years of tenure with Pitt County government. There's 15 in this group of employees, again, the known group of what we know about from our, our employment records. And what's being proposed here, or for consideration, is it does no good to offer them health insurance, because they can leave today and get the health insurance, the retired health insurance package. So offering them retired health insurance really is, is meaningless to them. So what's being proposed is an incentive payment of 6,000, one-time incentive payment of $6,000. And thus footnoted, with footnote number two, and that's derived as an average payout of giving them, we looked at three counties that actually did this, one county, Alamance, had given $100 per year for every year of service. So the $6,000 is an average of giving every employee $100 per, per year, and also going ahead and allowing them to take their annual longevity payment. Again, a lot of the factors and assumptions are the same as on the first consideration of our program, last 10 years have to be with Pitt County, have to be retirement eligible within the retirement system. The savings, again, is the same note, the DSS factor, again, we backed out those state and federal dollars that are not our dollars, so that we have pure county savings, pure general fund savings. Again, we have one-time costs on the payout of comp time and personal leave balances. Use the same assumption of 30%, use the same assumption of, of the 30%, if they were to take it, we would need to backfill half of those positions, so the, the savings are calculated, we, of 15 people, 30% would be five, if we had to replace three, we'd have two under the ERIP. A year-one, you'd have 39,500, year-two moving forward, you'd have 78,400. If you flip to the, the final sheet, kind of gives you a summary of the two programs of what, what we're really talking about. So year-one savings, you're basically talking about your gross savings, minus the cost of implementation, equals net savings. So in year-one, you have 500, half a million dollars in salaries and benefits, minus the leave balances, minus insurance, minus incentive payments, so year-one savings, 306,500. Year-two, it goes up again, because you, you do the one-time payout, you're looking at In order to know if the board is leaning towards going in this direction, in order to have an impact, and to have information for the budget process for the spring, for your budget workshops in May, we would need to do a rollout of the program almost immediately, and you'll see there's a schedule passed out, again, if you're leaning to go this direction. We would need to conduct group informational meetings with the employees, looking at doing that over a three-week period, March 19th, March 26th, April 2nd. We would then need to schedule through HR, one-on-one individual appointments, to talk to those employees, A, who are eligible, who are interested, and give them additional information on a one-to-one basis. Figure that over a two-week period, April 9th and April 16th. And then finally, we would need the employees to do, to sign a declaration of intent by Friday, May the 4th, to say that they're going to take it, they're going to go, because we need to know, in order to bring back to you a balanced budget, and again, this is one factor, we may look at vacant positions, we may look at, we would look at the ERIP program if you decided to go that route, we will look at other budget costs. Last and least, my, my goal is to look at filled positions and live bodies. There is a 45-day time constraint, the individuals have to have 45 days to, from the, the time of announcing it, or holding the first workshop, to consider the program. So this is the analysis, we have detailed information about the, the 52 employees and the 15 employees, right now, I'm giving you the, the global, because as a governing body, that's really what you need to see, the bottom line, plus the program details, so with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation, I think it's a very good presentation, it is something that I personally think that we need to consider, it's something that I have some experience with, because in the private sector, we did this several times, it is a way to get our cost, help get our cost under control, and also, it is a way so that it doesn't have a negative impact on our employees, and we're definitely concerned about that. So, what questions do you have, Mark?
I think the innovation of it, as you said, Mr. Chairman, is very appropriate, to try to go through a means of, of what we're trying to do, but the big issue comes in from the management's determination whether or not you're going to have to replace these people. Now, to me, that's the most important thing, because if, if you determine that these people are going to retire, you want to make pretty sure you're not going to replace them right after that. If you do, you're just adding a multiplicity of cost to it.
That's correct.
And so it's, it's really hinges on the management's connotation, as to what the needs are to provide the services. Of course, we're talking about cutting costs, but we haven't got into the rim of cutting the services that we're going to lose by these people's departure. So I think, Mr. Chairman, that that's going to put a, a big onus on, on the management, on the manager, to determine that you're going to let one retire today, and hire somebody replacing tomorrow, or within a year, or within two years. It might be more of a cost than, than what we've got now.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Oh, yes.
We'll just go right down the line, okay?
Yes. All right, well, the first thing I wrote down here, if we're attempting to get people to retire, you know, I look at GM, and what happened with them up there, on their retirement system, and it came out how much money they were going to be making, and all this other stuff. I don't guess that we would like GM always. But, do we really need them then, if we want to try to get them to retire? That's the question I wrote down. I'm looking at it a little different than what Commissioner Owens, if you don't, and the next thing I wrote down here also, when do we, when do we remove the employees from our health system? What age?
Well, employees, if you retire at, say, age 60, or age 55, we pay the employee premium until you age 60, 65, then you go to a Medicare supplement.
Yes.
So you, you technically are never removed, our costs are lowered, we buy that supplement at age 65, instead of paying 596 a month for that, that retired employee's coverage, when they hit the age of 65, the supplement is probably $300 plus or minus per month, it's half the cost of what, basically half the cost of what we pay pro-monthly within our self-insured insurance plan.
Well, I use, if it's going to cost you 300 and something dollars, why not use the same health system that the state has, or the federal government has, like we who are 65? And I don't use, as you know, I don't use, I use, I don't know what kind of insurance I got, I'm going to have it with the county.
We do, we're buying a Medicare supplement, which is a federal-
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we do.
All right, that's good, so that, that will save you money. And wait a minute, one more I want to ask you pertaining to, and how many years, and you kind of answered this, how many years of employment, what's the break-off point? Like 30, they retire at 30 years, is that right? Full retirement?
You, if you're, yes, with 30 years, you can get a full retirement within the North Carolina Retirement System.
I watch the break-off point as far as this, this early retirement. In other words, do you want them to retire at 20 years, or how much are they going to get?
Well, honestly, I really don't want any of them to retire, because again, like I said in the presentation-
Well, that's what I'm looking at.
The knowledge is going out the door when, when they leave. What the program consideration is, that if, if you meet the minimum criteria for the North Carolina Retirement System, and they are, have life circumstances where they can retire early, even because a person can go out at 30 years with a full retirement, you're not getting 100% of what you are earning as a county employee. Some of the employees on the, the lower end of this, this program consideration, that may only have 20 years in the system, are going to be going out with 50% of what they would get if they waited and got their 30 years in the system. Even at 30 years, again, you're not getting the whole, the whole thing. So you're, you're taking a, a substantial hit to go out even-
Yeah, well, that's the way I look at it, and to me, I, I wouldn't, if I, we'd want them to retire, if they're, if they're productive employees.
Right.
So that's where I don't quite understand.
Well, it's, Mr. James, it's either, if we're looking at positions and bodies, it's either the implementing a reduction in force, which is terminating employees with jobs who have mortgages and kids and so forth, on one end of the, the spectrum, or the other end of the spectrum, we're trying to provide an incentive for those employees who might want to retire, to convince them to retire, which then doesn't have a, should not have a, a major impact, because they're, hopefully, they're in a life position where they, they're ready to retire.
Well, what I wanted us to, and the employees to remember, you can look at teachers, teachers reply, have full retirement 30 years, all right, and they were double-dipping, y'all of you know about that. All right, now, there's so many of them want to take and have a job in teaching, and they can't get it because of the retirement, unless it's math or something like that. And that, of course, that's where it ought to be, because you've got all these teachers out there that can't get a job. But I think they got to look at each, employee needs to look very, look at what, what's going to happen to them in the future, because they, a lot of them at 30 years old, or 50 years old. I hope they're just beginning to enjoy life, and they don't, they don't enjoy life if they don't do something. I can tell you from experience, you, you need to be active.
Some employees may elect, if you, if you put this program out there as an option, they retire early, even with a reduction in benefit, then go out and get another job to supplement their income, to continue-
They just don't like where they're working, that's what you're telling me?
No.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we have a very dedicated workforce.
Oh, I know we do.
I think the, the group of employees we're talking about here, they're your long-term tenured employees who have, who have dedicated their lives to the organization, and I think there's a lot to be said about that.
Rick, Mr. McGlaughlin, I won't go there.
Okay, Mr. McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The commission probably will know that I brought this incentive program during our discussion of the budget. The state of North Carolina implemented this plan, and certainly, it was a very good savings through that. Now, you, you did a formula, Scott, did you, this, and I heard you say something about the, the formula was devised by the Department of Social Services or something, they, they, where, where did the formula come from?
Well, what I was saying was, in terms of calculating the costs, or the savings to us, took out all the DSS salaries, if, if I'm working a position in DSS, and I'm near, I'm eligible for this, this position, but half of my salary is paid by state or federal dollars, if I've got a $50,000 salary, I don't want to tell the board that there's $50,000 in savings, there's really only $25,000 in savings, because the other half is paid for by the state and federal governments. We, we backed that out of all those positions, as it was applicable. The only formula I was talking about was, for those employees who have 30 years of service today, the only incentive we can provide them, again, health insurance is, doesn't mean anything, because everybody earned that right, that, earned that benefit, so they could, they could turn in their, their notice to retire today, and they would be entitled to that under your personal ordinance. So the formula we devised was, okay, what could we provide them that might just give them the, the nudge to consider retiring, and that would be $100 on average per year of service, so if you've had 30 years, that's $3,000, plus then the average of what they would have received if they waited until December to receive their longevity check. So on average, when you took those 15 employees, and you averaged those two factors out, among the group of them, it was $6,000 on average. It was actually a little, like $5,840, we just said $6,000 on average.
All right. Did, did we look into some of the consideration of ideas that, what, what the state employment, employee relations, human relation committee, done, did we talk to them about any kind of-
Well, we compared ourselves to other counties, I think we compared ourselves to Orange County, they had rolled out a program, Alamance County had rolled out a program, and New Hanover County.
They used sort of-
Each one is, it's totally apples and oranges comparison, and, so we tried to, took a little bit here, a little bit there, and then didn't take in other areas.
Now, the, the other area that was mentioned, I, I would hope that most department managers and supervisors would have what they called a succession plan, that they would have in place someone who is shallowing those individuals with 25 or 30 years of employment, so that in, in view of what Commissioner James and Commissioner Owens brought up about, you know, the cost saving, that I think that if, if, if we don't have a succession plan in place in all of these- in all of these departments, we need one. I think it's critical that we have one because that is a savings within itself. And I'm going to ask you the question, do we have succession?
I believe we have a succession plan for the interim, for the, if a department head were to leave, I believe there's somebody in there that could handle and carry the responsibilities until we recruited, hired, whether that person, A, was interested, B, whether they had the full skill set to take that position on, or whether we had to go outside to fill the position. So, I think on an interim basis, no, we don't have a succession plan on a permanent basis. I can't say that there's, in every single county department, that there's a second person who's ready to step in there full-time and take the job. I don't think we want to promise that either because they may or may not be the person with the experience, the education, so on and so forth, that you want in there for that job. But we definitely want to consider them and encourage them to apply because they may be the person. But I don't think we want to almost guarantee that they would be the next person stepping up.
But at least they would have the experience and the knowledge.
Hopefully, to carry it on the interim.
To carry on into the interim. That's my concern. You know, my last comment is that, you know, if this is to, it sounds like the positive outweighs the negative from my reading this, I would think that it's certainly worth venturing into and see what we can do in terms of saving. We don't want to result to having to lay anyone off. That is certainly a great concern of mine, not to lay any of our employees off, but to have it on a voluntary basis, certainly would be worth pursuing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
You have an employee that's making $65,000, $70,000 a year, and you've got an employee making $40,000 a year, and both of them have, say, 28 years' service. How do you, does both of them get the same incentive pay, or is it based upon the salary?
You only get the incentive pay if, well, yes, they're both getting the same incentive pay. That is correct. The $6,000.
They get the $6,000, both of them get it. All right, if they take it, are they eligible to be hired back by the county on a part-time basis?
Well, what I had said in the outline, they would sign a form basically saying that they understand that they could not be, come back into a permanent position. That's not to say that we might need their skill set on a temporary basis, maybe while we're recruiting and filling, but there are restrictions with the retirement system that, A, you can't make any more than 50% of what you went out in retirement, and B, you can only work up to a certain number of hours per year, or if you do, they're kicking you back into the full-time employment status. And I believe once you go back into full-time employment status, you have to work three years, as I've heard in a workshop, before you can, quote, retire again. So, they're going to make sure that, but no, our goal is not to bring all these people back on a part-time basis. There might be a few that we need to on an interim basis. I'm not going to say that there's not. But our goal would not be, but there might be selective individual cases where we could use their skill set. Also, once they retire, they've got to sit out a certain period of time. They can't walk through the threshold of our door and do any type of employment-related activity, so they'd be subject to that requirement as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, when we look around on this floor, and Mr. James then would be entitled to a $6,000, not reimbursed, but if he retired. Move on, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you.
Don't pick on me.
Mr. Johnson, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Mr. Webb?
I guess everything's been said, but not everybody has said it. And I'm in support of it, and I think we need to move forward with it. That way, we get the real numbers of how many people are interested, how many people can participate, and the manager can get full numbers on what we can expect to save or not, and who we're going to replace and who we're not. Thank you.
Very good. Do you need anything else from us, Mr. Manager?
I would really like the board to take formal action if you're going to proceed with it, so we can have it in the minutes that really gives me and staff the marching orders to launch this and to go and take the next step.
Do I have a motion that we are?
So, move.
Motion on the second. Any discussion? Thank you. We will now move on to our items for a decision. The first one is our 2011-2012 Secondary Road Construction Program, and Mr. Rhodes is going to present that. And I believe, Mr. Rhodes, you have some guests with you.
They're not here yet, Mr. Chairman. If you don't mind sliding that down to the bottom of the agenda, and hopefully they'll be here in a few minutes.
Okay, very good. We will move on to our second item then, the appointment to our Development Commission. Do I have a motion to fill that position? Let me also say that that position is available because Mr. Noah Buck, who served on the Development Commission, was very active. He served as our chairman of the Site and Building Committee. He had to resign because of medical reasons, and we now need someone to replace him.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Philip Flowers.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, let's vote on Mr. Flowers. Okay, thank you. We also have some appointments and reappointments to the Pitt County Nursing Home Adult Care Community Advisory Committee. You see those on page 83 in our agenda. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint all of those that have, and reappoint those that have been recommended.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to also encourage others to take and to volunteer. This is a committee that we do need. They do a great service for the senior people here in Pitt County, the senior ones that are in the nursing home.
Okay.
I think it would be wonderful if we could get more to take and to volunteer for this council.
Dr. Johnson?
Okay, thank you. The next item is our three-person Fire Commission for the Fire Service Districts. Mr. Lee is going to present that.
Commissioner Garrison, other commissioners this morning. This is sort of a follow-up from what you approved in creation, in the creation of a 20 Fire Service District and the resolution that you passed on February 20. And basically, that's taking the 18 Fire Protection District Commission that you had appointed back in January and converting them to represent the Fire Service Districts and to create the Belleville-Bethel. With that, there's also been three individuals that's been recommended by the chief from both the Belleville and Bethel that you have received those names, and we're asking that you approve the full package of that, sir.
Very good. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, also want to note, before you is the January 9th, 2012 Agenda item that showed all of the names of the folks you had appointed to.
Correct.
The 18 original fire protection that is now becoming the Fire Service.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint these three gentlemen for me to be Fire Districts.
Very good. Have a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No. And all of these members has agreed to serve, no problem with?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, was that for all 20 or just for those two?
Just those two.
Okay.
By the way, I have met with them. I know with the head.
So, that's just for the two districts?
Yes. Well, do you need Paul?
I would need Paul.
I would like to go ahead and do it for the 20.
Okay, so we're voting on all 20 of the districts, okay?
Same.
And, very good. Thank you. Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Chairman, I would gladly go ahead and make the presentation, and if you have any questions, they should be here soon. Otherwise, if you endorse the resolution, we can move forward with the program itself.
Okay. We have a closed session. If you would prefer, we could go on and do the closed session and then come back?
Your decision. I can go either way.
Let's do the closed session. Okay, why don't we do the closed session, and maybe by that time, your additional presenters will be here.
Thank you.
So, Madam Attorney, can you take us into closed session, please?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A3 pursuant to attorney-client privilege in order to discuss what the attorney employed by the public body claims by or against that public body, and also under 143318.11A1 to review the content of closed session minutes under the exception for confidential information.
Do you have a motion we go into closed session?
So, move.
Second. Let's vote. We will take a three-minute break while we go into closed session, while we transition. Thank you. We are back into open session. Do I have a motion that we approve the content of our closed session minutes?
So.
Second. Okay, let's vote on that. Okay, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to continue our items for decision, and that is to have a presentation of our 2011-12 Secondary Road Construction Program. Mr. Rhodes is going to present that, and you have some guests with you, and you can introduce those.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison. Yes, we have several representatives here this morning from the Department of Transportation in coordination with your 2011-2012 Secondary Road Construction Program. Specifically this morning, you have Neil Laster, our Division Engineer, that's going to be making the presentation. You do have three road segments under consideration for this program, and I will let Neil come up and discuss that, and also introduce the remainder of his NC DOT counterparts this morning. Neil?
Thanks, James. Good morning. How's everybody? Again, it's always a pleasure of being with y'all every year. We're going to present to you the 2012-2013 Secondary Road Program for you, excuse me, 2011-2012. Before I get started, though, I did want to recognize members of my staff that are here. I have Mr. Preston Hunter, who is our Division Maintenance Engineer that's here, Bill Kincanon is here, as well as Woody Jarvis. He's our district engineer. Of course, y'all know Woody and work with him very closely. I'd also like to recognize a few members of y'all's staff, too. As you remember, the Hurricane Irene was devastating to eastern North Carolina, and I'd like to recognize Mr. John Demery, who was very instrumental in helping us with our debris removal efforts, keeping the facility over Allen Road open in off Times Forest, and it was just a tremendous help to us. And again, I really want to appreciate his efforts in working with the county and partnering with that. And also, Mr. Rhodes, Mr. James has been very helpful with us as well in trying to get these road additions and those requests of that nature as well, so we really appreciate James's efforts as well. So, thank you, James. You have, should have in front of you, I guess, our Secondary Road Program. I'll just go very, very briefly. I guess you just punch this? Okay. The first road that we have for you, the entire program this year is roughly $1.3 million. The first project that we have is the VOA Site Road. We've programmed $600,000 for this project. It's roughly 1.9 miles in length, and what we're proposing to do is do a full-depth reclamation where we're going in and taking the road and reconstructing it, more or less, using a cement soil stabilization base to try to bring it up to various loading capacities. So, again, we're looking at that section from SR 1784 to SR 1786, and that's going to be done this year at a cost of $600,000. We also have, on the second project that we have is on Tenth Street here in Greenville, we're looking at milling and resurfacing a section from basically Dixon Road to Evans Street at a cost of $250,000. That's a distance of .33 hundred, tenths of a mile. And the third project we have is in Winterville. It's on Main Street. It's .36 tenths of a mile in length and runs from NC 11 to the Fire Department. We're looking at doing a reclamation and a resurfacing of that section of the road as well. Again, we have $250,000 program for that project. The subtotal of our program is $1.1 million. We also have $205,000 for, $205,556 that's retained for overdrafts, contingency surveys, and other items that come up for a total of $1.3 million and $5,556. So, subject to any further comments or questions from commissioners, I would like to present that to you for your thoughts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Just one quick one, Neil. On the Tenth Street part of it, is any of that going to be in the way of where they're putting the Tenth Street connector in?
Glenn, that's going to be, it's going to overlap that. We're just trying to mill it and try to help the rideability of that until such a time as we get that project under control.
Thank you.
Mr. James?
Yes. Neil, I've been on this board a long time, as you know, and I've been, one of the main concerns we've got is bypass going around Greenville coming out there at Aiden.
Yes, sir.
And I, like I go to Kinston, they're spending millions of dollars up there. But yet, it seems like to me that Pitt County, this project that we need so badly here in Pitt County, it's on hold or something. It's got to be. And what can we do here as county commissioners or as the city of Greenville to kind of put a file under somebody's butt to take in the move a little bit? Because we need it, and if we don't get busy, I mean, it'll be 50 more years. I've been on here for 28 years. It'll be 25 more years before we get anything done. And people look at me and say, well, what are you doing? But what can we do to take and move it along faster than what it is being moved?
Well, I can speak to the fact that the project is, it has been programmed in our TIP. The fact being that right-of-way is scheduled for 2016, that schedule had actually been accelerated by the governor. So, we have, the main thing is that it is scheduled in this current work plan, therefore it's locked in, in place for that point in time. So, with the right-of-way, the construction comes shortly after that. My information, we've got construction beginning in 2020, but again, that's based on the current funding levels that we have with DOT and taking in consideration all the other projects that we have here in the division. That's the very earliest, it looks like, Mr. James, that we'll have it. The Southwest Bypass is a Loop project, so one good thing is that it's not subject to the equity formula that we have here in the division. So, it'll be funded with monies outside of what we normally get. But again, that's competing with other Loop projects that are in the state. But again, that's the best I have to offer for you as far as.
So, if people ask me or anybody that question, we would say it's going to be a long time still because you're talking about that, eight years, and that's just getting started. We're talking about 20 more years.
Well.
Before we do anything just tomorrow.
For the right-of-way, the right-of-way will be certainly less than that. And the good thing about the project is, for the most part, it's been designed, it's just ready to go to right-of-way. If funding were to become available for the department, then it's a project that conceivably could be accelerated, but then again, that's.
All right, that be as it is.
Yes, sir.
All right, and you say we got the, how we got the right-of-way or we just working towards that goal?
The project has been designed, for the most part, the next step would be to go to right-of-way, and that would be the next step, sir.
So, we don't have to right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
You don't know how much it's going to cost to get that right-of-way or any of those things, and the longer we wait, the more this right-of-way is going to cost us. Is it that? Well, I know that. I don't need to ask you that. I know that's to be true because what they're doing, they're developing the data era. And of course, you know, like, at the same time, we're talking about that, Dr. Johnson has been on about getting the road, the bridge across Tar River. All that, all that's on hold, is that right? I mean, otherwise, nobody's planning anything as far as Pitt County's concerned.
Well, that project is far, it's far along.
Well, and at the same time, when I'm talking, you know, Highway 33, and the last report that I had, they were going to leave Highway 64 coming from Tarber, come to, and this is what I really don't understand, they told me it's going to probably come to, that's some ways an edge come coming close to Penny Hill with it, do that section first. Is there anything to that? Or is that just what they were telling me?
I can't really speak to the Edgecombe County side of things, Mr. James, as far as the Pitt County side. That project is not funded in our work plan currently.
So, that would be Clark's out, Jenkins, and those people up there in Edgecombe Town.
That would be in division four, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, they seem to be doing better than we. I don't quite, evidently, we're not in the right political politics or something. I don't know. But Neil, don't get me wrong.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you, and I appreciate everything that you all do for us, but if you can't just do a little bit more.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Always try to.
Thank you, Mr. James, recognize Tom Johnson, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Getting back to the topic on our agenda, I wondered if the county manager has a recommendation in terms of the secondary roads proposal?
I would suggest to, recommend that the list of three roads he's presented to you. Initially, I did have some concern that two of the roads are within municipal limits, but I recognize that obviously DOT maintains roads within municipalities. Normally, the list is targeted, from my past experience, two roads outside municipalities, more in rural nature, but it is what it is this year, so I'd recommend to adopt the list as presented.
Thank you. Mr. McGlaughorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Neil, I have gotten a lot of concerns from some of my constituents about the 10th Street Connector.
Yes, sir.
And some have said that we're gonna have some, and James might could address this too, gonna have some overpass or something. What specifically are you all going to do in terms of this 10th Street Connector?
Okay, Mr. McGlaughorn, the project will basically run from Memorial Drive now over to Evan Street. Included in that, if you are leaving Memorial Drive, the project will be widened asymmetrically on either side, well, when you get on Farmville Boulevard, there where the residential section is, there's gonna be a symmetrical widening. At 14th Street, it'll actually take off on new location, and it'll come across maybe two or three blocks, and tie back in around Dickinson. Now, the feature over Dickinson, there will be a grade separation to allow traffic to go up and over the existing railroad, so it'll be an elevated roadway, and then it'll come back down about at a point on 10th Street where the railroad spur is, there around the trademark, and then it'll tie back into existing, and then it'll terminate there at Evan Street. So, it's a pretty short project in length, but it's very complex, because you're dealing with a lot of relocations of both, you know, folks and utilities and such, so.
I want to schedule completion.
We're gonna start Rideaway on that this summer, sometime, and the construction date is in 2014.
2014.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Owens, do you have?
I've signed a note now.
Okay, so, any other questions, discussion? What is your pleasure?
Most approved, second.
Okay, most approved, second. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you, Mr. Oars, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, we don't have anything else on our agenda, except commissioner comments, we'll start with you, Mr. Owens.
No, sir.
Have any comment?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, only that we did attend the NACO Convention, Legislative Convention in Washington DC, was a very good convention, I might want to add that it has been bipartisan, that both, it's good to see both Republicans and Democrats working together, and they had over 80,000 new rules was passed by the Republican man of Congress, and so that sort of kind of did some confusion, but most of the congressional leaders, I want to say that they realized that the rubber meets the rule here at the county government level, and they are working impressively together to meet some of the mandates that was given to us by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and some has been the increased county lottery funds and restore mental health funding. I think they are looking favorable on that, as well as they support the remote sales types collection, and certainly the unfunded mandates to the county, they are certainly more realizing that they want to be cooperative and working with us to not give us any unfunded mandates. So, I was basically impressed overall with the working relationship of some of the committees, however, they're still bickering among some of the top leaders in the Senate and Congress, but we were very impressed.
Mr. Smith?
One thing, one thing I want to say this, though, and then I'm sorry, you know, Pitt County is really stands in a very good position comparatively speaking with other counties in the nation. Do you not know that some counties in this nation has to have closed down their fire protection and law enforcement services, because they don't have money to pay them, and that's scary? And that is happening into some areas of this nation, so we did find so, we're very blessed here in Pitt County.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughorn, Ephraim, Mr. Johnson?
I do want to say that I continue to meet with the school board, and a very important development, it seems to me, is the school board is moving carefully toward unitary status, and they are preparing to, their documents to present to the judge at the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hammond, any comments? Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to continue as to my part of our visit to Washington, I serve on the Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee, and we had good meetings, one of the main functions, or the main purposes of it, was to help push to eliminate the barrier between the state and, I'm sorry, the federal government and the county government, being the state when it comes to grant funds. When they hit Raleigh, a certain amount comes out, then it comes to the counties, something NACO's working on is eliminating that barrier, so that 100% funds come to the county that's receiving them. Also, with our tenant funds that help support our social services, again, removing barriers between us and the federal government, because the federal government is starting to understand that we are the implementative level of government, where in Raleigh and Washington, they have ideas, and then we make it work on the local side. Also, pushing for, with the state, to give us the ability to do public-private partnerships when it comes to doing broadband internet service, has really gone past a luxury and become a necessity, especially for our school-aged students, especially in underserved populations, where you cannot compete if you do not have high-speed access to get the information to do your projects, if you have dial-up and someone calls you, you could lose it, if you're taking tests, which is becoming increasingly more popular, you could lose that test and not be able to retake it on those things, and also diversion programs for juveniles, trying to keep kids in the things that do well, and keeping them out of jail, and also on a personal note, while I was there, I announced I'd be running for second vice president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, but it was a good conference, we got a lot of work done, a lot of long meetings every day, but it was worth it, and as Mr. McGlaughorn said, Pitt County really stands head and shoulders, even in these tough times, above a lot of counties in this nation, especially to be a rural area, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you, we have nothing else on our agenda.
Let me make one close remark. Don't forget, all of us, if we know our commissioner from other counties, he's new, but he's good, I think, and I think we need to support him and help him out every way that we can.
I agree. Have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, all in favor? Very good, thank you.